The April two, twenty twenty five regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling the meeting to order. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Present.
Vreeman.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Corbin. Sol.
Here.
Rowan.
Here.
Shay.
Here.
Schulteis.
Present.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening by Councilmember Vreeman, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us.
Ask you to pray with me if you're inclined. Lord, do we want to come before you with grateful hearts this afternoon for the way that you are expressing yourself all throughout nature and for being in control of the seasons? And so we just look forward to your handiwork all around us through nature and its beauty that we get to experience. We ask now for your wisdom and discernment as we would navigate questions and contemplation of business of the city, that we might reflect your will and honor people in the process. And so we just say, we love you, Lord Jesus, and we thank you for this day. And it's by your name we pray. Amen.
Let the heavens to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, Mr. Vreeman. Next item on our agenda are consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and they have been reviewed by council as part of our council packet, and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have the item removed from the consent agenda, and then it will be placed on a regular agenda in its regular order. But before I ask if anyone would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda, Brenda, would you please review the consent agenda items for us?
Yes. Item four A, excuse the absence of Councilmember Corbin. Four B, approve the minutes of the March nineteen, twenty twenty five regular meeting and March twenty six, twenty twenty five study session. Four C, oath of office. Four D, extension of labor agreement with UWUA Local six-ten. Four E, a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for contribution to the city fiscal year twenty twenty five. Four F, claims filed against the city. Four G, award of bark mulch bids for downtown. Four H, approve the purchase of a new network video recorder. Four I, approve purchase of security cameras for the ice park. And four J, South Shore Village Business Improvement District Board Appointments.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Vreeman is their support?
Support.
Support by Sol. Any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Byrd.
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Schulteis?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the public the opportunity to address council at our regular meetings, our study sessions, and we do provide the opportunity at every single one of our board committee and commission meetings. We do want you to know that this is one-way communication. This is the opportunity for you to address council on any subject that you believe is important. However, we do not answer questions during this time or engage in discussion, but if there's a question that staff could answer for you, they may be able to circle back to you after the meeting or at a later date. We do ask that you approach the microphone. Please state your name and the municipality in which you live, because it's important to us to know whether you are a resident of the city of Holland. Your time is limited to five minutes, and each speaker may speak one time to council. There are three lights on the dais to help you with your time. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means you're doing well on time. Yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means your time has expired, and we are strict about that. If there's anyone here who would like to address council, please come forward to the microphone at this time. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Martha Capistani, Holland.
Good evening, council. I'd like to thank you for your service. In honor of that, I'd like to share, or excuse me, I would like to thank you also for declaring April Faith Month for Holland. So in honor of that, I'd like to share some of the history of our country and how the founders' faith was an integral part of the formation of our country. It says in Isaiah thirty-three, twenty-two, "For the Lord is our judge, our lawgiver, and our king; it is he who will save us." And I think that's where we get our three branches of government: judicial branch, legislative branch, and the executive branch. But now I'd like to go a little bit deeper into the concept of separation of church and state, and what you may not know is that it actually originates in the Bible. You see, God created three institutions. In Genesis, God established the institution of family by creating male and female and placing them together in a lifelong union. Next came the institution of civil government to address our relationship with our fellow man. Now, when God's people left Egypt, God had them establish their own nation, and at that time, God placed Moses over government and civil affairs and Aaron over spiritual affairs, thus separating the two roles and jurisdictions. Now, neither excluded God from its operation, but each was to be headed and run by a different individual and not the same person. All right, we're going to jump ahead a little bit. In thirty-nine, or three-nine-one A.D., Emperor Theodosius combined church and state. The government decided what the official church doctrines would be, and it punished violators who disagreed with those positions, not allowing them to practice their faith. Fast forward to the fifteen hundreds, during the Reformation, those who followed the Bible began to call for a return to biblical separation of church and state so that the government would no longer control or prohibit religious activities. Now, the early colonists who came to America brought this view with them, and in America they made sure that the government or the state could not control or limit religious beliefs or activities. This was their understanding of the separation of church and state. Now, the phrase cannot be found in the Constitution or the Declaration of Independence. In fact, it is not found in any of our nation's founding documents. Related to government, though, the phrase first appeared in a letter written by Thomas Jefferson to the Danesberry Baptist Association of Connecticut in eighteen oh one. It basically assured the Baptists and other denominations of their right to be free from state control in matters of faith, not the other way around. So the Danesberry Baptists wrote Thomas Jefferson, expressing their concern that the government might try to regulate their religious expression, and in response, Jefferson wrote his famous letter using the phrase "separation of church and state" to reassure them that the First Amendment prohibited the government from trying to control religious expression. In short, the First Amendment was intended to keep the government out of regulating religion, but did not keep religion out of government or the public square. Now, some people believe that the separation of church and state is in the First Amendment, but I bet everyone in this room knows that that's not the case. It appears nowhere in the amendment or the Constitution, and right at the beginning of the First Amendment, it says, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." And I think that matters, that it's the first thing listed in the First Amendment. So faith has been part of America for over two hundred years. As a matter of fact, there are several sermons from church that Thomas Jefferson helped facilitate. It was a church that met inside the U.S. Capitol, where services were held in the House Chamber every Sunday, and both as Vice President and as President of the United States, Jefferson faithfully attended those services inside the U.S. Capitol and saw no constitutional problem with them, for Congress wasn't controlling religion for the entire nation, but rather was only allowing religious expression to occur, which was their constitutional role. However, in nineteen forty-seven, the Supreme Court lifted an eight-word phrase out of a two-hundred-and-thirty-three-word letter to the Danesberry Baptists to declare, and I quote, "That there was to be a wall of separation between church and state, remaining silent on the rest, leaving out all the context of the said letter." So I think sometimes we've neglected teaching our heritage and history regarding how integral the founders' felt faith was in forming and establishing America. Much of our laws have basis in the Ten Commandments, and a great general and our first president, George Washington, had many quotes regarding his faith, and I will close with one of them. "The man must be bad indeed who can look upon the events of the American Revolution without feeling the warmest gratitude towards the great author of the universe, whose divine interposition was so frequently manifested on our behalf." Don't you love the way that they talk? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henrickson, Zealand. So I'll follow tonight with April Faith Month. Welcome to National April Faith Month. Holland is blessed by the concerned women of America's attention. We are the first municipality in the United States to have our mayor, Nathan Box, declare and designate this month, celebrated by this council, as Faith Month. The declaration has been done by the mayor and council since twenty twenty-two. Mayor Box is on the CWA website with the first declaration. Very impressive. We invite you and the community to plan the activities during this month. April fourth, Hope Orchestra Pre-Carnegie Hall Concert is this Friday at seven o'clock at Jack Miller Auditorium, and it's free. Every Saturday, beginning April five, at ten o'clock throughout the month, we will be meeting at Collin Park Band Show for prayer, ten o'clock to eleven o'clock. Eleven o'clock to twelve-thirty, families are welcome to do chalk on the walk in the area, illustrating their favorite Bible stories and verses on the sidewalk with environmentally safe chalk, as required by the city. Last year, Central Avenue Church families did their sidewalk for resurrection messages. All churches are welcome to follow that example. We have plenty of chalk donated to share. This is our freedom of religious expression or speech. Holland Right to Life will provide billboards throughout the Holland area containing hope and help, life, the other choice. These are extended throughout tulip time. They are looking for donations. Call their office. Taze, Christians United in Song, Monday, April fourteenth, seven-thirty, Saint Francis Sales Church. Grant Me Hope, Spring Gala, Thursday, April seventeenth, six to nine o'clock at the Holland Civic Center. This is a fundraiser for children and foster care in assisting them to find forever homes. This is dear to my heart, because my girls are both adopted in the joy of my life. April twenty-five through twenty-seventh, Friday and Saturday, at seven-thirty, Sunday at ten o'clock, Joshua West from David Wilkinson's Ministries, The Cross and the Switchblades, coming to Lake Shore House of Prayer, eight-thirteen Lincoln Avenue. Redeem, Knickerbocker Theater, Turning Point School of Dance Performance, April twenty-four through twenty-six, tickets at Knickerbocker Theater. National Day of Prayer, hosted by the National April Faith Month Action Organization. Thursday, May first, twenty twenty-five, doors open at five o'clock. Family buffet dinner, see event right for twelve dollars and fifty-one cents, cheaper than McDonald's, and children under twelve are free in your immediate family. Tickets are on sale till April thirteenth, six o'clock open to the public for bilingual worship, prayer, and message from Pastor Educator Madison Campos. How prayer changed our country's history and how prayer will change things now. National April Faith Month Action Organization is a year-round organization now, soon to be a nonprofit. We plan events outside of the month of April as well. Abundant Life Seminar, how to defend preborn life and help experience freedom and forgiveness for those who have experienced abortion. May third, eight-thirty a.m. to three p.m., brunch and lunch provided at Third Reform in Zealand. Registering info@abundantlifeministries.org. Worship concerts in September twenty twenty-five at Collin Park Band Show. Parade of Lights in December, Tulip Time Parade and Events twenty twenty-six. For more information, go to National April Faith Month Facebook page or united, prayunited28@gmail.com. And all are welcome to this, this just isn't a Christian event, and I have invitations for the council for the National Day of Prayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm Catherine Ristolabass. I live in the city of Holland. I'm here representing myself this evening instead of one of the other many hats that I wear. The last time I, last time or maybe the time before last I came to council, I expressed something that had really been weighing on me, and it, even now, months later, it's still been weighing on me. And at that time, I told you that I didn't think that in the twenty-six years that I've lived in Holland now, that I should personally know five people who have been hit by cars when legally crossing the street in intersections, in crosswalks. I have received some feedback that Holland's done all it can. This is not Holland's fault or problem. I just took the liberty of sending everyone except for Matt, sorry, I forgot Matt, an email listing many links and stories supporting my comments for this evening. After that, last time I made the comment of five people that I personally know who have been hit by cars, one who died, one who almost died, and others who lives have been changed completely and are no longer able to be the long-distance runners that they were and have daily pain. Somebody reminded me, I actually know seven. I forgot about two, and that really distressed me, for me. When I first moved to Holland, and this is anecdotal evidence, I'd be happy to be proven wrong on this, I think that there were about like, it was kind of like one person a year would get hit by a train and die. And now, I'm assuming because there's so many less coal trains, that now, fortunately, sadly, the one that this year was the first one I could remember in a long time. Now, that should go down also because with the Campbell Plant closing, we'll have so many less trains in town, right? I don't know, but I'm assuming there'll be just the Amtrak train twice a day. We have so many street crossings, we have so many intersections, we have so many crosswalks. Why do I know so many people have been hit by cars? Why am I aware of people that have been hit by trains? I think Holland could do a better job in protecting the public, in protecting the pedestrians, in protecting the citizens, the lives of citizens, over the convenience of property. We so often in the city value property over people, and in this case, it seems like we're valuing the cars more than the people who are not inside of the cars, the people who are outside of the cars. The word jaywalk did not exist, to the best of my research, until nineteen eleven, because streets were for people primarily. And then cars were invented, and then retroactively, walking across the street was made a crime and pejoratively named jaywalking, because you're breaking the rules all of a sudden, when that rule didn't used to exist. Now, I know that jaywalking, crosswalks came to be, you know, that came to be in hopes of protecting people, but to my knowledge, to my experience, to my observation, it doesn't seem like it's really working. So I have sent in that email a lot of links to stories, how in the British Medical Journal, they no longer use the word accident, they use the word crash, only because accidents are preventable, they are predictable, they are planable, and they exist when there is a break in the chain of protection for the people who are being injured and killed. Sweden has, this is kind of a stretch, it's car-on-car, I believe, in the stories, is a goal of eliminating all traffic deaths in the entire country, and they've taken, for a smaller country, with a smaller population overall, obviously, than even the state of Michigan, heroic measures, and they are succeeding. They aren't succeeding right now, but they have cut their numbers drastically. There are many towns, again, linked, that have taken lots of actions, physical actions, you know, policy actions, but actual physical actions, barricade actions, days of closing the streets to traffic. So I please, I implore you to look at these links, to look at these, and please weigh on this, and prove me wrong, that, or even better, prove me right, that we have less deaths now, but why do I personally know seven people? And I'm not from here, right? Twenty-six years is how long I've lived here. I plan on living here the rest of my life. Every time I go out walking or biking, which is frequently, I'm actually really concerned, and people yell at me, you cannot control that. It's a danger, and I want to feel safe in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, my name is Pastor Craig Van Beek. I am District One County Commissioner for Alligan, so it's good to be here tonight. So I'd like to give my report, if I could, just some things that are going on at the county. So we continue to work on our, the courthouse, that is wrapping up, that's getting close to being done. Beyond that, our facilities have moved, some of our services have moved to our Dumont Lake facility, so those are just starting to come into fruition. We're also trying to put as much as we can online. We understand we are a large county, and it's a ways for our constituents to move, to go down to get some of those things. So we're trying to do the best we can to serve everybody inside of that. Beyond that, our community care facility actually goes back to eighteen sixty-six when Alligan County established the County Poor Farm to provide for the poor and sick and homeless. So that facility was redone in nineteen seventy-one. We're going to start to make some changes to it. We're actually going to reduce the beds a little bit, because we see now the need, as a pastor as well, I see this more, couples are going into care. It's not just individuals now, and so we're going to reduce beds a little bit, and we're going to make some more spaces for couples to be able to go in together for care, into life care. A couple other things going on as we continue to work at our parks and recreation. I'm a big proponent of being outside, not only for mental health, but physical health, so we continue to work towards our plan on that. Our one-two-three net, our high-speed internet, Alligan County is kind of ahead of the game on that. We're doing the best we can to provide high-speed internet to everyone that is in our county. And beyond that, I'm working on some water issues in Hamilton. Hamilton does not have water or sewer. One of our elementaries there does not have any type of sewer, we just have holding tanks, and so we're worried kind of about quality of water, the flow of water in Hamilton, so that's something I'm looking at to see if we can do something to improve the water quality and to bring sewer into Hamilton, which will be a lift, but we'll see what we can do there. So beyond that, I'm okay on time. Nathan warned me about time. I figured he was going to put me at three minutes instead of five, so I got my full five, because I am a Van Beek, so. I want to separate church and state for a second, so I'd like to say, as a pastor, it warms my heart to hear the things I heard tonight. I don't have any sermon for you tonight, but it makes me feel good seeing your faith, Mayor Box, you know, the month of faith, and just to hear the things I heard tonight makes me feel really good as a pastor. And right now, we're talking about wisdom at church in Proverbs nine, we're talking about wisdom, and you guys continue to show wisdom in your faith and the decisions you make here, and so I thank you for all you do, not only for the city of Holland, but as well as your faith and continue to push that. So from the bottom of my heart, as a pastor, I'd say thank you for that as well. So any questions for me, you can email. I know we're not back and forth here on public comment, but if you have any questions or like any more information, you may email me, and I'd be glad to respond. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Jeff Minkus, three sixty-one Stratford Way, apartment number one in the city of Holland. Two quick things. Number one, I am thrilled to see on your agenda tonight that you are talking about the bridge at Van Ralty Farm that I believe, in my time living in Holland, I believe there have been two iterations of that have washed out, and that you'll be talking tonight about a plan to build it. And so as like weekly, at least weekly users, my wife and dog at Van Ralty, we consider ourselves Van Ralty's biggest fans, and we love to be able to make walks that are loops. There's something satisfying in that and not having to do an out and back, and right now with the bridge missing, we've been doing out and backs for a long time on the river, yeah, the River Trail, which bothers us a little bit. So excited to see that, so kudos to all of you and curious to hear that conversation. Number two is with my hat as Chair of the Human Relations Commission. One of the things that we've been talking about in kind of wrestling with as a Human Relations Commission is this whole ecosystem of city commissions and boards, and how do we collaborate together? There are hundreds of volunteers who are wonderful, who serve on these commissions, and right now in the Human Relations Commission, we have a particularly strong group of volunteers. Esther is an incredible asset to our commission, and we've been just kind of exploring, what does it look like to collaborate with other boards and commissions? I don't have answers, I don't have like, let's do this, but I know that you all serve as liaisons on all of the city boards and commissions, and so as you're working with those groups of volunteers, if you're, as you're working with those staff members, just a seed planted of like, how might we work together? On the Human Relations Commission, our kind of mission and expertise is ensuring a community of belonging for all citizens, and so how can we work together? So as you're doing your work, know that that's something that we're chewing on, and we'd love for you all to chew on and find ways to collaborate together as well. Thank you all for your work and for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
David Fields, city of Holland. And Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. I want to talk just briefly about the airport. Something that I know is not part of the direct responsibility of city council, but I think you should be aware of current state and activities. First, I want to thank the council members who currently are serving under West Michigan Regional Airport Authority. It's a task that is pretty technical in nature and has done a fine job over the years. We've looked at the growth of the airport from the expansion of the east-west runway, all the tunnel work that was done to accommodate it several years ago, up through the new terminal, which if you have not seen it or been in it, I encourage you to, built through our tax dollars and a long list of donors. We've come to the next phase in this planning process, which has to do with the north-south runway. Now, that sounds like an unusual subject to bring here, but right now, the airport is set up for east-west operations. Many of you know that we do have a lot of north and south winds, and there is no way to accommodate that, especially for the lighter airplanes, not the big business jets, although they at times will also have problems with it. The north-south runway has been on the airport plan for many years and is something that is valued by the majority of the users at the airport. Currently today, eighty percent of the activities, landings and takeoffs at the airport, would need and use the north-south runway, and that's been critical to us. There's been, over the last three years, a movement underway to abandon the airspace associated with that runway. And giving away airspace at an airport is like giving away beach at the state park. You never release it, because you never get it back. The goal has been to try to get the plan in place now to build this north-south runway, ninety percent of which is funded by the federal government and five percent by the state government, and it's provided for currently in the funds that the Airport Authority has or by local donations. So I, point in bringing this up, I think, more than anything, is I think the council needs to understand it. We're major participants in the airport. It's critical to us, it's critical to see the development take place. Why there has been this big push over about the last three years to do away with the airspace, and then consequently, the runway itself, is a mystery to me. It makes no sense, but it's been a very strong element within the Airport Authority itself. There has really no methodology today for the user group to address the Airport Authority. There was a user group, it was disbanded, we've kind of regrouped on our own, and I'm speaking on behalf of that group, of the people that are there that also operate out of the airport, but I need to say that the biggest amount of revenue that comes into that airport is not local, it's from all the airplanes that fly through it. It's an itinerant facility, so when they stop and buy fuel, that's where the money is made, and that is where a lot of the funding comes from. All of those operators pay a lot of money in federal fuel taxes, which is what comes back to facilitate the runways and the airport itself. So I encourage you to become aware of it and be aware of it and be sensitive to the fact that we don't want to lose this airspace by any stretch of the imagination. Oddly enough, if you look at all the airports in the state of Michigan, we are in the very, very, very small minority of those that do not have a north-south runway, and it's just something we've not gotten to and we need to. So I want you to be aware of it. I would even like to have you be asked for some reports on occasion as to what the status of this all is. Thank you very much, enjoy the evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda is item nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the public the opportunity to address us in person at our council meetings, we do also have an email address where you can send us written communications, and that is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. And we do accept those into the record when we have them. We do not have any this evening, but I do like to have the public know that that email address does exist. It's publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Next item on the agenda is item twelve, Echo three point one, approve purchase of new pedestrian bridge at Van Ralty Farm. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yeah, this was one, you know, that sometimes I think you're aware that things are coming. Probably because we have it like in the municipal capital improvement plan and we talk about things many years ahead of time. Sometimes it's fun though to remind you of an exciting project that's coming forward. Or as Jeff said tonight, he's like, hey, this is kind of cool. We wanna hear about it. So we wanted to specifically have our director and our assistant director of Parks and Rec, Andy and Garrett, here tonight to not only provide the recommendation of what's going on at Van Ralty Park, but also maybe to step back a little bit and talk about other things that are going on in Van Ralty Park too. So I'm not sure who's taking the lead. It looks like Garrett. Uh, Garrett, I got the clicker up here, but just tell me when to advance and I can help you out. And thanks for being here, Jeff.
Good evening, Council. Kind of nice that I had some context already for what I'm gonna talk about. So I might have a plant in the audience every night I'm up here, so that'd be a useful tool going forward. So, so the bridge at, at Van Ralty Farm, we do have two bridges out there. And this one has been washed out for a while due to a large rain event. You can see there, that's the old bridge that we had. That was connected to the boardwalk system there. It's the, the southernmost bridge that we have out there. And yeah, big rain event came through in the spring and ended up washing that out away from our boardwalk system. Excuse me. So we put a lot of work into Van Ralty Farm so far. Kurt Van der Zwaag and his team, he's the Recreation Maintenance Supervisor. They have done a phenomenal job at that property and the community has really noticed. So this is one of the parts that I've been working on to support him and his team for all the work they've been doing out there. I just wanna mention too, if you do look at the All Trails app, it's a hiking app that I frequently use when I go to national parks. If you look at our Van Ralty Farm Loop, I went through, there's two hundred and eighty-some reviews. About two-thirds of them mentioned this bridge being out, so we're really excited to be here to try to get that replaced. So other than that, yeah, so going forward, as we mentioned before, we need to, we need to engineer, pre-engineer a bridge and have it span the entire bank. So it's gonna be about forty feet is what it comes down to. And this will be a safer option for everybody involved as the previous bridge had support that goes down near the river, river's banks edge. So, so when we started working on this, Andy and I found out that there's a lot of people that have to know about a bridge that goes in. Ottawa, Alligan County Drain Commission, Tulip Inter County Drain Commission, Fishback and OHM Advisors, both are engineers that checked out the site to make sure that we were good to go. The state came in with Eagle and they gave us a permit to be able to put this bridge in. Sinclair Recreation has been awesome to work with. They've held pricing on this bridge for about six months now, which is pretty rare in this day and age. And then Brian White in-house with the Transportation Department, since he deals with Eagle and all this type of stuff, often he's been an awesome advocate for us. And he's really kind of helped lead the way with this, a lot of this project too. So location, that's the loop that got mentioned before. It's an awesome loop if you haven't been able to do it before. But that part where the red X is, is where the bridge is gonna go back in. It's the closest to the country club entrance, which is, yeah, it's a great scenic spot. And yeah, has, it's the highest elevation of the park as, as we, as you lead out into it. And then, yeah, as we talked about, it'll be a, a big part of completing that loop. So spans forty-foot bank to bank and it's a pre-engineered by Scenic Shelters is who we're working with. It's gonna be all wood. It's a southern yellow pine wood that we're gonna put out and stain. That's the same version of the bridge that'll be out there, but ours is gonna be a little bit longer and obviously sitting a little bit higher. So we're gonna have two sections of twenty-foot boardwalk that goes on to, that spans out to each side because that's a requirement of Eagle to keep things out of the floodplain, but also staying off of certain natural areas that they, wetland areas that they didn't want to be touched. And then, yeah, we'll be bringing it in through a utility path. There's an easement that's conveniently located near the spot. So we won't have to take out many trees. It's already something that's cleared often by the BPW. So, and then we're looking at install, because we're working with Sinclair Recreation, they have a lot of playgrounds to build throughout the summer that they're gonna be looking at installing this in the fall of twenty twenty-five, which is overall a pretty good timeline since they need to order it as soon as you guys approve it. And then just some additional context for Van Ralty Farm. I believe it was on the last council agenda that we were going for a grant at the state level for four hundred thousand dollars. We're excited to port, to potentially get that grant and put some money into that, continue to put money into the property. Some other smaller projects, we are putting in lights at the dog park. The dog park has been continuing to go gangbusters. There's, I don't know how often. And if you have the chance to drive past there, but there's always somebody out there. And so we figured at this point, if it's this popular, rather than having to run their dogs around with the headlights, that we'll just give them lights to play under. And then the improvements to the drainage on the trails. Again, if you go out in the spring, there's some massive problems with drainage that we usually have to Band-Aid with woodchips at this point. And so we're looking at more permanent solutions that we're able to put some tile underneath the trail and be able to move that water effectively underneath, rather than having it wash away woodchips every single spring. So, and then we're excited about some new signage. We have some new trail maps. And then we're excited to be able to put that out there and then also update our interpretive signage because it's just showing a lot of age. And then, as I mentioned before, yesterday we were able to submit that trust fund grant. So that was a cool, a cool opportunity to see what we can break, see what kind of funds we can bring back to the city. That is, yeah, that's it.
Any, any questions for staff? I, I guess I just have one. We, the bridge is washed out twice before?
That's, that's what I'm told. Yeah. I think one of, one of the times was before my time here.
Any, any design changes on this one to keep it from going out a third time?
This one clear spans, so we don't have any support near the river's edge. And this one will be quite a bit higher. There is gonna be steps that go up. So the clearance is closer to the hundred-year floodplain that they shot for a lot with the drain commissions that they wanted us to be out of.
Okay, great. Thank you. Right? Yeah, Ms. Rowan.
Yes, thank you. You mentioned the couple of other improvements, the lights at the dog park, improvement on the trails. In the documents here, mostly just has the bridge info unless I'm missing something. Do you have quotes or what's the ticket on the other improvements that are added to this?
That was just for additional context for other stuff that's gonna be happening out there. That part, the lights and everything else has been approved to, to already go out. The boardwalk replacements has not. That'll be part of the grant funding if we are able to secure it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Shea?
All that stuff about the bridge, awesome. But as, just since we're talking about the signage, I wonder if I could just put in a little note of desire for Spanish language stuff on those signs when that, when that comes up. That's something that I hear a lot from my commissions, so I just wanna put that out there.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? No? Great. Thanks, Garrett. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve.
Move, move by Bird, is there support?
Support.
Support by Soul? Any discussion? Brendan, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Freeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Schulteis?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item twelve, Echo six point one, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, strategic plan and business plan, quarterly progress report, January through March of twenty twenty-five. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. You know, sometimes you look at an agenda and you're like, man, we might only be there for nine minutes. So let's take something off the consent agenda to highlight. And it's like, we're not in a rush to get out of here, but you know, we've been here for forty minutes. So I'll just highlight things on this. The action, and you're used to this, right? Because every quarter, I'm sure that you go through this and kind of reflect back on things that have been checked off the list or moved forward over the last three months. And it's kind of cool, I think, for us sometimes to see like a reminder of how much stuff does move every three months. So a lot of finance stuff, good legislative work, monitoring kind of the overall environment. Several of you went to the Capcom event in Lansing. Way at the beginning of the quarter, we did the social justice awards. We keep pumping out the city e-newsletter each month and that has been kind of reformated, reformatted and always improved. City, Council, you did your retreat and your governance review and your strategic planning. Holland City Fiber, I was excited to put out last Friday. That were at the halfway mark.
We passed half of the dwellings we're gonna pass for the whole project, yes.
Yep. So that's pretty cool, isn't it? I'll point out, they passed my house. I'm not connected yet, so I do understand that it's halfway, but we're still excited, Dave.
Not half in terms of linear feet, but it's-
Half of the residences, yes. Yep. We, that, it's accurate and it's fair and it's worthy celebrating, right? Exactly. I know that a lot of you are eager about, we're still working on the recycling center diligently. Taking a look at, we think is a really, really good site that checks a lot of boxes. We're just working through some challenges there and don't worry, it's not fell off the radar and we hope to bring back good news to you. And then you all got to experience, but there's no shortage of projects that continue. So we had the tour last week and you got to see the DeGraff Nature Center, the Collin Park Fire Station, and also the Ice Park. So again, just wanted to rip through some of these things pretty quickly and happy to also answer any questions. But otherwise, this is just for you to receive.
Great. And we do, are, any questions for the city manager in regard to this item? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council in regard to this item? I think we just need to receive it. We, we do have it down for a vote on this. Move to accept?
Move to receive as presented.
Move, move by Rowan, is there support?
Support.
Support, was that, was that Mr. Schulteis? Oh, that was Mr. Shea. Support by Shea? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirteen, communications from the city manager. Do you have any additional items that you would add to what you just said, Mr. Mr. Van Beek?
Yeah, sorry. I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go through four things really quickly. One, you may have received something from the Michigan Municipal League today. It's something that's been on our radar and something that in particular that on your behalf I sent into our local congressman's office today. And that there's a move potentially to remove the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds. And long story short, if that would happen, certainly for us, for the Holland Board of Public Works, and quite frankly, for every form of local government across America, it would remove a status and increase the cost of every single local project that occurs. Whether that be a building project, a utility project, a road project, plug-in, anything. So certainly something that we wanna preserve and will continue to advocate that because it would significantly increase the cost of bonding and we think that should be something that is preserved. We are also seemingly constantly monitoring right now uncertainty in different grant categories. The most recent one for us is potentially the flow of transportation funding from the feds through the state to the McAtaw area coordinating council and then possibly with us that projects either that we've planned for or maybe haven't completed yet. So we're, we, yeah, digging into the middle of that, right in the middle of today and understanding that. And then once understanding it, advocating if there is any risk for us. So that seems to be a everyday occurrence right now. You saw that not only did all of you, but the entire community received or is available to them the budget in brief document. And just a reminder, you certainly have lived through this process now for many, many months. April one is the time in the charter that we release a first version of the budget for the public to see. The way we do that is we release actually the budget in brief document first. It seems to be that document that I think the public can digest and understand the most simply. But some people wanna dig into and next week, you will all be receiving when finalized, the long version of that budget document. And as soon as you receive it, it also immediately becomes available for the public. That is then prepared for your budget review sessions. And just a reminder, and you'll get the instruction when you get your budget. Some of you get it electronically. Some of you are like me, you still like to get the hard copy version, right? Just a reminder, if you have question, if you have time and if you have questions as you're reviewing that budget document, I think it's just helpful, send those questions, route it through me or Mallory or Lynn or, there's really no wrong door at City Hall to send those questions. Then what we do is when we're going through the various budgets, we'll just highlight your question and then we'll be prepared to bring a good answer to that. And then everyone can hear the answer to a question. If one of you have it, it's probably beneficial to everyone. So we are launching into that process here soon, right? And then finally, I, I'm not sure if I've let everyone know, but I thought it's a quick update. As the mayor was giving his, you know, kind of feedback or preparation before public comment tonight, it was one of those moments where I think a lot of us as staff, we kind of went, you know, he does that really well. And it's probably a pretty good model that we could use in all of our boards, committees and commissions that, as you say every week, that we give that opportunity to all of our committees. So we went through the process. We asked mayor, hey, mayor, can you write this up kind of a, for a version? And we are providing that to all of our boards, committees and commissions. And giving it through our staff liaisons to then have a conversation or provide to the chairs of those various boards, committees and commissions so that they're well-equipped to run and provide that public comment portion for all the meetings. So if you see that and are kind of like, man, the mayor's now like infiltrate, infiltrated all the meetings, I, I guess that's partially true, Mr. Mayor. So just as a heads up. All right. And that's all I have.
Yeah. My, my apologies for, for doing that. Next item on the agenda is appointments and communications from the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Costa. I don't know if it's coincidence or not that both the city manager's house and the mayor's office just barely made it into the top fifty percent of the, the locations that, that reached the-
No favoritism.
The, none at all, none at all. Just, just barely into the top fifty percent where they, we were the passings, not hooked up yet. But the crew was by my office last week and it was very, very exciting to watch them, them come and put the orange pipe underneath. Orange, really appreciate the fact that the orange, that the pipe is orange that went underneath the ground there. So looking very, looking forward to the little door hanger so that I can sign up. Every time the internet is slow at my office, I think, gotta get that Holland City Fiber. I do have appointments, recommendations for council. Council, I would recommend that the city council approve the removal of Luis Lozano from the Planning Commission for Lack of Attendance effective April one, twenty twenty-five. And the appointment of Alec Miller to the Planning Commission for a term expiring June thirty, twenty twenty-five. And I would be looking for a motion in that regard.
So moved?
Move by Soul, is there support?
Support.
Support by Freeman, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And then I do have two proclamations this evening. First is in regard, as was mentioned earlier this evening, in regard to Faith Month. Whereas faith is an integral part of American life and the residents of Holland represent faith traditions from every part of the world. And whereas we recognize the founder of Holland, Reverend Albertus Van Ralty. And whereas we recognize the founder of Holland, Reverend Albertus Van Ralty and the community of Dutch Calvinist separatists who came to Holland for a better way of life and to fully express their faith. And whereas we recognize the individual freedom to express our faith is a cornerstone of our great nation and protected under the United States Constitution. And whereas the freedom to express individual faith traditions has helped create and sustain our city, state and nation with vitality and diversity. And whereas people of every faith from every corner of the world continue to seek better lives and freedom to worship free from persecution here in Holland and other parts of our nation. And whereas people of faith find hope in their traditions in times of crisis and uncertainty. And whereas we acknowledge the tradition and strength of each person's faith as we make decisions for today and the future to strengthen and grow our community. And now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan and members of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Faith Month. We encourage residents of every faith tradition to observe, reaffirm and celebrate the religious diversity of our great nation, to worship in their own tradition, seeking truth and strength from God to face the problems of today and give thanks for the access and opportunity to worship, pray, meditate and practice their faith tradition in their own manner. We invite members of our community to gather as they choose to pray for our nation, state and local government leaders and for wisdom to lead Holland on the paths of justice, peace and goodwill for all people. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, the second day of April 2025, Mayor Nathan Box. And I have a second proclamation this evening in regard to Fair Housing Month. Whereas April 11, 2025 marks the 57th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, also known as the Fair Housing Act, which created national policy for fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, familial status and disability and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act prohibits discrimination based on age, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression and further prohibits source of income discrimination in rental housing. And whereas the City of Holland has a long history of fair housing advocacy protecting source of income and decades later, sexual orientation, gender expression and gender identity ahead of state adoption. And whereas the City of Holland Ordinance Number 1784, adopted by this city council on August 8, 2020, reading in part, "No person or persons shall discriminate against any person or persons within the city regarding the advertising, listing, showing, inspection, negotiation, purchase, sale, exchange, ownership or financing an interest in real property or the leasing or occupancy of real property on the basis of age, racial, of age, race, national origin, color, disability, education, familial status, sex, sexual orientation, gender expression, gender identity, height, marital status, religion, source of income or weight." And where we, and whereas we as a city recognize organizations throughout our community, both private and nonprofits, housing professionals, whether they be realtors or the banks that work tirelessly to make housing a reality for many. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan and members of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month. We invite residents to attend the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan's 37th Annual Fair Housing Workshop Series and local events being hosted to celebrate and learn about fair housing and how we can work together to continue to widen the path for housing access and opportunity. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, the second day of April 2025, Mayor Nathan Box. And that is all I have this evening. Next item under the agenda, item 15, appointments, motions and communications from council members. Anything from council members this evening? Yes, Ms. Rowan?
Just very briefly, I wanted to say thank you. We, I know we talked about it two weeks ago when we met and Keith briefly mentioned the MML convention, the Capcom experience. And I just wanted to say thank you for the city and for the residents who support this activity for council. It really is quite a valuable opportunity for us to interact with our legislators as well as other municipalities, the leadership of our state, our local, our neighbors. You know, it's quite a supportive environment. We learn a lot. We understand as kind of newer council members, I had a deep understanding of how very much, you know, we interact and that advocacy that we get through the Michigan Municipal League is quite valuable. And I just wanted to give a shout out of support and thank you for the opportunity to experience that. It's, it's really a wonderful experience. And I think our city residents are, you know, I'm humbled that they allow us these opportunities as council members and that our city supports that. So I just wanted to say thank you. These are very challenging times and I think, you know, nationally. But I think locally what we do on a nonpartisan level is so much more important because I think some of the perhaps powerlessness that we might feel as the world kind of moves very quickly around us for, you know, whatever, whatever way you sway, our nonpartisan local politics, our local governance of our city is that much more important. And the fact that we do it with a collegial atmosphere of exchange of ideas, of exchange of opinions and we still manage to get things done. And so I'm ever so appreciative of that environment that is supported by our city and our city residents. So thank you again for that opportunity. I just wanted to give a quick little note. I didn't really have my thoughts collected when we were here last at the regular session. So thanks for indulging me. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Kim. Mr. Shea?
Thank you. I just want to let you all know, council member Bird and I serve on the Airport Authority and we are getting down to the last two folks that we're interviewing for our Executive Director or Airport Manager position. Both candidates that we'll be talking with further are amazing candidates and we're super excited about what's to come there, so we're really looking forward to that. So if anybody has any questions, you can talk to Quincy or I.
Great, thank you. Any other council comments? Wonderful. Then there is just, oh, then I would entertain a motion to enter a closed session to consult with the city attorney to discuss settlement or trial strategy for a case of Prosthesisian versus the City of Holland. Where a discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city. And we do need a roll call vote on that. And then also just for members of the public to know, we are not likely to make any decisions or engage in any action following that. We would, the only thing that we would be doing would be adjourning the regular meeting. So I would ask for a motion from council to enter into a closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Soul. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Raymond.
Yes.
Soul.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shea.
Yes.
Schulteis.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you. We'll take a few minutes for folks to be able to head out and to get the cameras turned off and then we will enter closed session. Thank you.